Today I'm going to speak about the whole geothermal development in relation to those two presentations this morning. And actually, I have to comment, I listened to Mila Lani Trapp of IDG making a very excellent presentation with statistics and even emotion about how, and really exposes the whole current operation of PGV and all that, and I think that's good. On the other hand, you know, she's representing IDG, and of course, she's making promises, the same kind of promises that people heard, you know, when, I think the old adventure twenty-some years ago was the HGP, is that right? Hawaii Geothermal Power or something, they made the same similar kind of promises, and look at what happened. And now, what we hear from people who actually live in the area are very, very touching stories of how they're being affected health-wise, and of course, we don't know all the, you know, long-term toxicity effects of all these emissions, but nevertheless, the record of Ormat and PGV is horrible and dangerous. Now, my point is this, what do actual, you know, civilized societies look at when there's an option, an energy option, that's dangerous and has a record of, you know, lying to people and so on? Well, recently, Germany just decided to shut down all their nuclear power. Now, they didn't have a catastrophic accident as yet, but they can learn, they know that things do happen. They looked at Fukushima, and they realized that that's not the way to go, so they're going to commit themselves to themselves, I think by the end of this year, or very shortly, to be completely, you know, use their power from, generate their power from solar and other renewable resources. I think that's the way to go. Now, I, we're not going to go, you know, blindly copy anybody else's, you know, example, because first of all, they're foreign country, they're a continental place, this is an island, so obviously, we have to look at alternatives in regards to each own, you know, its own specific situation, but I'm saying that if you find that something is dangerous and has a record of being mismanaged, it definitely has to be committed to an entirely alternative way, and I think that solar is definitely the way, okay? And the other thing is, I don't know too much about Germany, but then chances are, even when they go to solar, it's going to be controlled by a lot of big corporations, and I think that's the key, that's the problem, is decentralization is the key, and that's probably why all these people will not go to solar, because it's, solar power can be, is a decentralized way of people producing their own power.
Would you go to your next subject, please? Sir, please summarize and go to your next subject.
Yeah, I'm trying to summarize, you know, all these people are always saying, these developers always say, "Oh, you guys are always anti-such and such, and you don't have an actual proposal for alternative." Well, like I said, Germany just decided to decommission, that's the alternative, and short of that, if they take, "Oh, we'll have a contract for whatever, twenty more years." Well, if you really care for the people, would you commit fifty percent of your profits to a county fund, specifically earmarked to provide interest-free loans to homeowners so they can get photovoltaic power? And then, you know, and once they do that, you know, the power needs will be lowered, and by that time, they can phase out, so decommissioning is the real alternative. Mahalo.
Thank you, sir. Next two test fires here, Lisa Hildwine and Laura Travis. Lisa, you're first. Please turn your mic on, please.
Excuse the drama, but this is a very serious situation. Dear Pele, dear God, dear Ohana, I bring these words in hopes to be heard by this great council, the people, by those in power, by these presentations we've seen today, has changed my testimony, so I'm going to speak from my heart. I came here to live a sustainable life, in respect of the sun and the rain, and I found myself a beautiful home here on Pohiki with Julie Connor, and I spent twenty months as a caretaker there, helping her with the horses and the gardens, and somewhere along the line, there is a leak there. I smell metallic gas, and then a diesel smell, and then speaking with Mike Calikini, that would be appropriate for the drilling, those types of things for leases. This is real, I got this for my birthday, June 30th, my forty-eighth birthday. I hope to God I don't have to use it in an emergency, because this isn't effective, but my daily life of walking through the fields where there's low-lying things, where I smell the gas, this bark. I am very ill, I spent a total of fifteen days in the hospital, I want to know where the DOH is, I'm going to try to organize an independent medical study, I have numerous friends who are doctors and who care about me, I've worked in the medical field for twenty-seven years as a medical transcriptionist, and I can no longer do my position because my memory loss, the pain that I have in my body, my back specifically, the fatigue won't allow me to do my job, as the quality of my work isn't the same, I'm not as acute, and this is a really, it's a hard thing for me to watch my mental capacities go away, I believe it is from the gas, just as some children can't excrete heavy metals, they are artistic, and I work with artistic and special needs children, and I do know the symptoms of heavy metal poisoning and poisoning. I was healthy, yoga's been a practice of my life since I was sixteen, I'm a trained dancer, it hurts every day, twenty-four-seven, I have a cystic condition, and where is the DOH right now? I need to speak to them to conduct a health study, and in speaking with other people in community, they have cysts, they always look like they're pregnant, they have pain, they bleed randomly from, it's just, but they're not here, they're not taking the study, they're afraid, they can't afford the care, they're either in the gray area where they can't afford healthcare, or they can't afford to take care of their things, and they don't, they're like, wow, you know, it's all coming together, people are uniting and realizing how ill they are, and it's neurological. I have, my bone marrow is being replaced by fluid you find in a blister, pretty much a cyst, I have, by CT scan, cystic spleen cysts and pelvic cysts, and they found a thyroid nodule, all since I've been here. If we have to organize an independent health study, who do we go to? That is my question, who do we turn to if we can't turn to the Department of Health to help us? My heart goes out to the families who are nearby, I see the lights, and I hear the sounds, and I have the smell, and I'm talking about the relocation, I walked with them during the geothermal relocation, united with the families, the people there, and why do they need to leave their beautiful homes, you know, their gardens? I live sustainably, I live in a tent overlooking the ocean, right now, I lost my job, I'm a grandmother of three children, twelve, ten, and eleven months, seven months, see? I came here with respect of Aina. And to drill into the heart of Pele to receive this energy doesn't seem safe. On the mainland, I walk for the indigenous cultures there and the tribes, this is earth medicine. It's for all of us, the Hawaiian culture, for all of us people. I pulled this today out of my belief system, and I'm only going to read to the end, but it's respecting danger. Is the lack of self-respect the reason that humans have no, have not quite learned how to recognize these dangers and correct them, or is it the hopelessness that keeps humans from removing themselves from harm's way? The solutions are not simple, the basic building block of recovering our wisdom and humanity is always the same, respect for all life, respect for the self, no set of solutions can flourish without basic integrity and respect for all parts of creation. If we lose touch with the ability to respect all life, we have given our authority and our permission for degradation and danger to reign. Do I have a moment?
Go ahead, ma'am.
As the earth revolves around the setting sun, our children make their way down paths that we've begun. I found my way down too many crooked roads, society has paved them with glitter and with gold, and leading nowhere, the paths are broken by war and separatism, fear and shattered homes, but our children, earth's children, all children deserve so much more, our elders did the best that they could do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Don't geothermal. Hello, my name's Laura Travis, my testimony will be focused on the dangers to drinking water and the environment of the production and re-injection wells that are used in PGV for geothermal effort. The first point I want to make is this, the safety of the production and re-injection wells is a function of the stability and understanding the geology of the areas into which we drill. Stephen Finsterl, a leading hydrogeologist at Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory who specializes in understanding the properties of rock layers and modeling how fluid flows through them, has said, quote, "There is no certainty at all of any of this, and whoever tells you the opposite is not telling you the truth. You have changed the system with pressure and temperature and fracturing, so you don't know how it will behave." A report, sorry, a report I read helped make the same whole point, and I quote, "While drilling a disposal well in southern Ohio, workers for the Eris Tech Chemical Corporation, since bought by Sanogo and sold again in 2011 to Haverhill Chemicals, were overwhelmed by the smell of phenol, a deadly chemical the company had injected into two Class One wells nearby. Somehow, perhaps over decades, the pollution had risen to one thousand four hundred feet through solid rock and was progressing toward the surface aquifers. Ohio environmental officials, aided by the EPA, investigated for some fifteen years. They concluded that the wells were mechanically sound, but Eris Tech had injected waste into them faster and under higher pressure than the geologic formation could bear. Though scientists maintain that Eris Tech leak was a rarity, they acknowledge that such problems are more likely in places where industrial activity has changed the underground environment. The Hawaii East Rift Zone is changing dynamic geology. Even in areas that the geology is less dynamic and more stable, failures of types of wells used in Hawaiian geothermal efforts occur. A ProPublica investigation showed one in six wells have problems, and that seventy-five-hundred in the USA have leaked or have allowed fluid migration. Such failures have led to environmental problems throughout the USA. According to one report I read, in South Florida, this is, quote, "In South Florida, twenty of the nation's most stringently regulated disposal wells failed in the early nineteen-nineties, releasing partly treated sewage into aquifers that may one day be needed to supply Miami's drinking water. Precautions taken to protect groundwater and the environment in Puna are similar to those taken at other locations in the USA. With more dynamic geology, additional risks of well failure with contaminated groundwater or other environmental impact is increased, but the regulatory mitigation of the risk has not been increased." To outline the second point I want to make, consider even a well-maintained, well-drilled in a stable and well-understood geology does not have the strength to maintain its integrity in an earthquake. Horizontal displacements of the earth could snap a well like a toothpick. County of Hawaii is one of the most seismically active areas in the world, and the probability of earthquakes that threaten the integrity of the re-injection and production wells cannot be disregarded. Such damage to the wells could cause them to become a hazard. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Our next testifier, Michael Hollinger and Deborah Well.
Aloha, guys. I'm here to talk on the presentations that were done this morning and connect some information that I've been researching to, to, all three communications, Department of Health, I guess they were supposed to show up. Well, I've been reading this thing from the United Nations, U.N., "Five Lectures on Environmental Impact Effects of Geothermal Utilization" by Trevor Hunt from New Zealand. Really, really good information, I highly suggest in one of you guys look it up and just tear it apart, because it's the closest thing to an international standard for a lot of things that I've seen yet. One of the most important things that I saw in here, though, was common failures in monitoring, and I want to read that part off for me, and it's, "Experience has shown that few monitoring programs are adequately planned and executed. Regulatory authorities must beware that this may be a deliberate policy on or subconscious action of developers in order to obscure or make worthless any embarrassing data while still appearing to comply with the regulations. Common problems are failure to start measurements well, failure to start measurement wells before production begins, so that a good baseline is not obtained." It actually gives a whole, like, standard into monitoring, and I think it's really important, I think the counties should look into seeing if PGV has established monitoring program from before that well was created, just to compare results from all the studies that are going to be done in the future. Failure to extend measurements, particularly ground deformation and microgravity outside of the field resulting in poor or ambiguous results, you guys all understand that, right? Failure to make, the failure to use trained staff resulting in poor data being obtained and leading to doubt that true comparisons can be made. Failure to adequately document the monitoring data, hmm, that sounds familiar. Failure by regulatory authorities to check the monitoring that's being carried out when required and to the specified precision, well, that's really important in itself also. Catastrophic events, that's a really interesting bit of part, like any engineering development, catastrophic events may occur during the construction and operation of a large-scale geothermal power scheme. Landslides, hmm, wait a second, isn't that, isn't that PGV plant on, I don't know, one of the steepest drop-offs inside of the state? Where geologically it is pretty much imminent that that area is going to fall. May not be now, may not be a hundred years, but do you want to test humans' capability of setting something off like that? All right. The other one also is hydrothermal eruptions, you know, that's like a blowout times a hundred. That was pretty interesting reading, create a crater from five to five hundred meters, you know, and just keep going and going and going nonstop, you can't close those, and that's happened fifteen, thirteen times, fifteen times in New Zealand. All right, on to IDG's presentation, that was really interesting, all the information that they gave, I thought it was, but to understand some of the landmassing that was going on, especially in particular from Mila Lani, when she's said to the council, "Oh, I was part of PDA before, I've been arrested with them." People inside of our organization don't exactly remember her being arrested during those times, but that's besides the point. You know, it's just really ambiguous, all this information, you know, oh yeah, I took down lots of notes on that. So what happens when the earthquake happens to those casings that feed right in the middle of the reservoir? Are those going to split? I mean, we have earthquakes very common there inside of that area, it'd just be really good to get some information from the scientists or anybody on what the possibilities are at that. What happens to development with geothermal, and what does that do to the island's food security? Do you hear them? They want to purchase, they want us to purchase and consume, is that a line of sustainability? They want to completely revamp our energy system so that we can then purchase electric cars and all this other stuff, you know, it's, that's not, that's not sustainability, that's just beating a culture of consumerism. They will make billions, billions, they will still make money from the rate conversion that she went on forever talking about, that they do, and they are partnered with Pico, this is very well documented, she kept going on about how she's not for the bill, but it's, there's been many articles and interviews about how they are very much for the centralization of state power. Microgravity monitoring, really need to go check that back into that, if they wanted to sustain the island, they would have got some into the solar business and done a nonprofit business. All right, thank you.
So I have a number, I was going to put it on the sign when we were here today, but I didn't, the number's four thousand. That is the estimated number of people that have died as a result of the accident at the Chernobyl Nuclear Power Plant. The World Health Organization stands behind that number, four thousand. In nineteen fifty-nine, before I was born, the World Health Organization made an agreement with the International Atomic Energy Agency, IAEA. The agreement stated formally that where both organizations share interest on an issue, they would consult with each other with, quote, "With the view of adjusting the matter by mutual agreement," unquote. In practice, the World Health Organization has not completed their own studies about Chernobyl, they promote research done by the AIEA, that's where the four thousand number came from. The AIEA was set up specifically to promote nuclear technologies. Is this a conflict of interest? Do the IACA have a vested interest in keeping that number low? Many other researchers show hundreds of thousands of deaths caused as a result of that accident. And deferring to the IACA, has the World Health Organization lost its credibility? If I took a vote of the people in this room, I would imagine that many people would say that they did lose their credibility, they are mere puppets of the nuclear power industry. Hearing that the Health Department from the state of Hawaii would be at this hearing, what I'm really most interested in knowing today is how people in the Hawaii Department of Health would vote. I know that they were invited, I heard that they didn't come today. When I heard just a month or so ago that the Health Department here in the state of Hawaii thought it was just fine to proceed with drilling explorations for geothermal without environmental impact assessment, I was floored, and the Health Department was okay with renewing the lease on the old geothermal plant without any comment. Then I hear of a flurry of legislation at the state level to expedite geothermal, which is basically to unshackle them from environmental scrutiny, and the Health Department backed this. My first thought was collusion. My second thought was, hey, if you guys inside the Health Department don't want the job, maybe you should just quit, move aside, I'm sure there are plenty of people who want the job of looking into the situation. By definition, isn't it the job of the Health Department to be concerned about the impacts of big projects like this? It's too common a theme these days, collusion between government regulators and industries, tar sands, fracking, mountaintop removal, nuclear, deep-well oil drilling, there are so many environmental catastrophes emerging as a result of our energy technologies, really. To me, it approaches criminal that our Health Department could not find enough grounds to even warrant investigation into geothermal. All I can ask today is that each person working for the government, no matter what level, look hard at their personal integrity and make sure that the direction their government is headed is grounded in integrity. Some days, I look at history and I see people's capacity inside a government and society to act responsibly to the call of one's job description, yet be complicit to great atrocity when the outcome of an organization is seen as a whole. Most commonly recognized, this can be an acknowledged culmination of Nazi Germany. When too many facets of government lose their credibility, at the same time, the government loses its legitimacy altogether. The actions of government and industry around the issue of geothermal development are raising red flags. I listened to the presentations, and Ormat told me how squeaky-clean they are. I need to hear Ormat and the Health Department and all elected officials address industry and governmental collusion before I begin, I can even begin to trust anything they say. And that was how I felt before I came today, and then I heard Mila Lani Trapp opening up a pan of I don't even know what, I couldn't even follow at all. The only other impression I was left from the testimony today is the picture of the blowout preventer. In all seriousness, if that's supposed to stop Pele, and that was supposed to be a reassurance to me, I felt like I just should go watch Get Smart with my seven-year-old, because I know at least there, there's the real world and there's fantasy, and that did cut it through.
Thank you. Next testifier, Richard Reimer.
Hello? Yeah, there we go. I'm Richard Reimer, I'm a physician on this island for over twenty-two years, and I work at Kohu Hospital in Kohala, Mustang Cup, Al, Kohala, and I dedicated my life to preserving life, and that's all humankind as well as non-humankind, and we haven't been very kind to this earth, and I want to address the presenters who are here this morning and give my point of view about what they have to say. First of all, I'm for the precautionary principle that Europe is finally embracing, and it's taken some time because our government, as well as most developmental governments, have benefited by taking shortcuts and having to prove harm first, like polychimy and medicine, you had to have so many earth effects before it was proven harm, and so the precautionary principle is saying we should prove safety first, not have to do the reverse. Industry is always back proving harm first, and we have eighty thousand chemicals that are man-made, and we can't test them all, there's eighty thousand chemicals, and they have synergistic effects, where A plus B doesn't equal A plus B, it's, it's an additive synergistic effect. We have very limited studies, now in medicine, we do that, we put people on, you know, three agents, they're common, Coumadin and Dijonson and Lasix, and we try to make sure that they don't have drug interactions, but to deal with a soup of pool of eighty thousand chemicals on which PGV is going to be using a soup, they have to, they have to work their drills, they have to use benz... They have to work their drills, they have to use benzene-related compounds as solvents to drill, which is part of the fracking industry to have to drill. You have to have chemicals that allow your drills to work. And I have no doubt that they'll work their ways in the aquifers, it's just the reality. Now, once they get in the aquifers, it becomes an issue of, you know, the EPA and I deal with the FDA with medications. And the problem is, is we know, as all politicians, there's a revolving door between industry and the private sector, and we go through a revolving door. The problem with it is that, that we find out that things like arsenic, for example, which P G V has, is in subterranean areas, isn't a problem because it is a carcinogen. And if the problem with it, it's negotiable, what the safe level is, it's totally a negotiable issue. The Bush administration doubled the safe levels over the previous administration. So when you get down to trying to judge, you go by these certain levels, but you find out they're just negotiable depending on industry, and industry traditionally writes the legislation, you know, the politicians legislative amendments. So policies are made first by industry. So it can be very, very complicated, as well as a revolving door. I want to just move, you know, beyond that issue. We all talked about the issues of stuff happens. There's, you know, through my island, there was Chernobyl, there's, you know, there's Shiva, there's the BP spill. You know, we're all finding out that technology is not perfect. And I live in Kohola, and I've been there for twenty-two years, and I built with solar and installed it myself when it was six dollars a panel, or six dollars a watt, excuse me. And now you can build huge monstrosities for three dollars and fifty cents installed per watt. In the next two to three years, they're expected to drop another thirty percent. And technology that doesn't use rare earth metals and from China, there's just dramatic changes. I'm afraid geothermal is just so antiquated in its technology that solar is going to just be where our county really wants to invest in. I did it, and I'm very, very happy. The solar panels I've had have not degraded in twenty-two years. They're still having maximum, well, ninety percent output to what they were originally. So I have great confidence, the ones that went to the moon are still operating from the Apollo emissions. So I think that this safety is very well proven. The payback on a solar panel is four years for the energy that's demanded to produce it until you finally reap the back into wattage produced. So it's, it's very, very sustainable in terms of the word renewable. I always find it really offensive for people called geothermal, anything renewable, unless it renews itself. It's just a semantic thing that always bothers me. But a tree is sustainable and renewable because it reproduces itself. A horse does horsepower, it reproduces itself, it has babies. Other technologies don't do that. I just wanted to clarify a little semantic about renewable. I know it's not totally, but I heard the presenters kept saying renewable energy, renewable energy, and it's really, you know, you know, it's a misnomer to call it renewable. Let me just move on to, you know, the issue of solar is cheaper, it can be grid-tied, you don't need land space issues, there's plenty of buildings and houses already put it on, there's already codes developed for it. And again, three dollars and fifty cents a watt. So let me move to the next issue. I, I, in terms of the last presenters from the I, the I, the I D G group, I kind of found his greenwashing, to be honest, and trying to be cultural sensitive. But I must present my feelings about what is really facts and not opinions. The fact of the matter is, Wattenegel and Rees in the nineteen nineties came up with EcoFootprint. And EcoFootprint defines how much acreage it takes to live our lives. And there's, there are twenty-five billion acres on this planet, divided by seven billion, it gives us three point eight acres per person to live. That's all of our needs for food, for fodder, for fuel, for fineries, you know, clothing, shelter, everything. The reality is Americans are living with twenty-four going on thirty-one acres instead of three point eight. We're living six times plus that and going on ten times that to have biofuels for our energy needs. Because now we don't have subterranean sources, we have to grow our fuels. So I, I just wanted to address that issue about sustainability, our EcoFootprint. If we're four percent of the world population consuming twenty-five percent of the energy and the waste, and since we're six planet living, the presenter this morning is talking of greening. I don't think our way out of this problem in life is going to happen through electric cars and have our predecessors ecotourism and solar washing machines and, and the like kind. I think what we have to do is go on a diet, just like we do with our lifestyle and with our foods we eat. I'm reminding what I did at Kohola, you can see what new construction is, there's pharmacies and junk food stores, community stores. And that fills up my emergency room just fine. It makes me money to have people come with their Big Mac attacks. But they just, you know, they'll, and I tried to use all of my interest in prevention, but in three months of the field, they're right back to living an unsustainable diet that leads to unsustainable economy, which costs two trillion dollars. It helps their costs, it's the same thing, it's part of the expenses, two trillion dollars. If we learn to live within the Eco, EcoFootprint or closer to it, we could not have to import our current capacity, which comes from now Iraq or Iran or Afghanistan, whether it's lithium from Afghanistan or, you know, fuel from, from Iraq. You know, we have to go and use other people's cheap labor, their natural resources, and lease their land. Where we lived, in the past, since the eighties, we cleaned up Iraq all over America. We've done clean rivers, lakes that were once drinkable. We've done a lot of work here, but what we actually did is we gave up our manufacturing, sent it to China, now they're cleaning their lands. And we're just importing that preparing capacity to our stores. So we haven't really changed our habits. And I think we need to, to try to align ourselves to take the path to the land if we're going to really, truly be sustainable.
Summarize, please.
I would have to say that, you know, we are, if we want to even root watcher or buy bar a religious tennis, we have to stop stealing from future generations and stop causing genocide, a hundred and fifty species a day. We're experiencing the highest rate of extinction rates in the history of the earth, of three million years of life. This is the sixth wave of extinction, it's all at the hands of us, human kind. And we need to, to change our policies to reflect, to reflect current modes. We are still post-World War II, thinking of development expansion and unlimited resources. The problem is, is father greed is colliding with mother nature, we have finite resources. Summarize, we have to live simply to more, to simply allow others to live. And, you know, there's plenty for our needs, but not for our greed. And that's something that I think tennis, we should walk out, practice in our life.
Okay, I'll take some testimony, try to save my voice. Okay, alcohol is a wheel, okay on time, you get a break, you're good? It's for you, okay? You want a break? Okay, we'll take at least five minutes.